You're good.
Yep.
Tom?
Yeah.
Our moment of silent meditation, pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Call this meeting in the Montague County Commission to order. It's January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, ten-ish AM. We're joined by all three commissioners. And first we'll have consent and approval with our county administrator, Renato McClure. Good morning. Good morning. What do we got?
We have eight exonerations for two thousand four oh six ninety-six minutes for January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Vouchers, General County, two hundred ninety-three thousand, ninety-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Coal severance, five hundred dollars. Magistrate Court, four-ten-twenty-five, nine-one-one, four thousand thirty-four oh five. Chestnut Ridge Park, one thousand six fifty-two seventy-three. Camp Muffley, two thousand five fifty-eleven. Mason Dixon Park, nine-twelve-twenty-five. Mon County Center, eight forty-eight oh two. Opioid settlement funds, eighteen thousand seventy-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Assessor's valuation, four thousand three oh five sixty-four. Payroll, one million eight oh two four thirty-one eighty-three. ARPA, fourteen thousand four fifty-six oh nine. Purchasing card, General County, eight thousand nine oh four seventy-three. Home confinement, forty-two dollars. Chestnut Ridge Park, four ninety-nine sixty-six. Mason Dixon Park, four thirty-six sixty-eight. For a voucher total of two million one hundred fifty-three thousand one fifty-six eighty-seven. We have no budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the county website and fiduciary orders for January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move that we approve the consent approval agenda items as presented.
Show move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And no additional fiduciary matters, this is correct.
We don't have any additional fiduciary matters, but we do need to set the date for the next administrative closure of estates.
Okay.
They've proposed March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Remove that we approve the date as presented.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So it'd be, aye. If you're March twenty-second.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. So if you have estates that are still pending and haven't had any action taken, a while, take some action or get them finished up.
I believe the fiduciary offices has the list and they've, they've prepared notices to go out to all those folks.
Yeah. Actually, I think some have already gone out. That's going to be coming down the road. Next, we have introduction of new employees, personnel changes. Sheriff? Oh, there he is. I couldn't see you, I couldn't see you behind the, behind the pillar there, sorry.
First, excuse our tardiness. We were running a couple of minutes late there.
You're good.
Great.
Well, I've got them all.
You got them all?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a lot of extra property maybe.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, the first person we have, we have Gavin.
You guys can welcome up.
Gavin Hissam is here. He's a student currently at WVU. He actually played baseball at Salem with my son a couple of years ago. He's been hired as a transport officer. He's benefit eligible and this position was advertised.
Okay. Move that we approve the as presented.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Another thing about Gavin is his brother is, his older brother is a deputy sheriff as well.
Great.
Welcome to the family.
Ashlyn. 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 This is Ashlyn Napier. She's been hired as a full-time, benefit-eligible court security officer and she will be starting tomorrow as well.
Move that we approve the personnel as presented.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Very good. So now the next three are the school resource officers, which we have filled and. The board approval was last night, so they've all been approved with the Board of Education. Steve Ford comes our way by way of Morgantown Police Department. He was there for.
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years. He's retired. This position is benefits eligible and he starts tomorrow.
Great.
You want to go ahead and announce those three?
Yeah. With your own position.
Okay. The next one is Kirk Thomas. You may recognize Kirk. He was a deputy sheriff for.
Twenty years.
Twenty years. Benefits eligible. Starts tomorrow.
Welcome back, Kirk.
Second.
And last today, we have Paul Lawless. Dustin is what you're calling by. Fifteen years in the Marine Corps. NCIS agent, retired, now lives in the area. Starts tomorrow. Again, it's a benefits-eligible position.
Move that we approve the personnel as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Welcome.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
We have some from our parks.
Yeah, we've actually got two that are on the agenda, two that were not, that I was sent later on.
Yeah.
Two actually started January eleventh. Robert Lyons and then Jack Miller, who was a rehire.
Okay.
From a previous, from last year. These are both tubing hill. Actually, all four of these will be tubing hill attendance at Chestnut Ridge Park. Part-time, seasonal, no benefits.
Great.
So we've got those two and then Kristen Louis and Sydney Elwanger.
Move to hire.
Second.
We have first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I want to thank, just publicly thank the first two individuals. Because they worked, we were able to open up the tubing.
At least the hill.
The hill. The hill. Yeah.
All right, next we have one from the assessor. We have Patrick here. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Dee.
All right. We have one person this morning, Melissa Perkins. She'll be a full-time transfer land book clerk. She replaced Brooke Collins, who left us a while back. This position is full-time, benefits eligible and has a ninety-day introductory period.
Okay. Move that we approve the personnel as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Patrick, will you be sticking around?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other appointment?
No, thank God. I'm sure, Tony, you'll be very happy about that.
Sure.
That's enough.
Next, we have our comments from the public section, session. This is an open forum. Anyone's welcome to come up, state your name and address and your, whatever it is you want to talk about. So we have about two to three minutes at the president's discretion. So I'll now open the public comments.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Cal Carlson, eight fourteen Ridgeway Avenue, also a county employee. What I wanted to discuss today is some questions I had about the Mylan My Park Pass that's available for employees. I noticed that in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four and fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five on Open Gov and transactions, thirty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars was paid to Mylan Park Properties out of the coal severance. And in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, the memo was for My Park Pass, three hundred thirty-three employees, which comes out to a hundred and eight dollars a year and nine dollars a month per employee. This was first introduced in two thousand and twenty-three and there was a Dominion Post article on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three regarding this. Some of the questions that I had about this were, how many employees does the county have, including a full and part-time breakdown? And if all are eligible for this pass? I'd like to know how many employees have activated or are currently utilizing their pass totals? How many in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five? Because I know myself, I've never activated my pass. I've never utilized it. I just, it's not convenient for me to, you know, head out to Mylan Park. That's opposite side of town where I reside. How are the metrics being tracked? Because I know within the program, you know, you can visit the pool, you can visit the exercise amenities, you can do the discounted rentals. Are there metrics being tracked about, you know, the visits, employees, you know, who have used those? And, you know, say that, you know, if you look through this and find that perhaps maybe less than half of the county employees are utilizing this benefit, could an option be explored to maybe perhaps have that be an opt-in? And, you know, this relates to health and wellness. I don't know, you know, how these budget lines work. But, you know, perhaps maybe that could be help, you know, allotted to offset the rising healthcare insurance costs. I know that that hundred and eight dollars a year, you know, my, my insurance premium per month as a single person is now, you know, over fifty dollars. That could cover two months. And so, you know, I was just wondering if some of these, if you all could explore some of these questions and this benefit as well. And I appreciate the time to speak about this.
Great. Thank you, Cal.
Thanks, Cal.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seen no one, I'll close public comment. Next, we have our office manager, Colleen Kuhn, for grants.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First up, I have a subaward agreement for the Appalachia High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas. They were awarded, the Sheriff's Department was awarded nineteen thousand dollars for overtime for that. So you'll need to sign that agreement and there are subaward conditions. Next up, I have request for reimbursement. The first one is for the.
Wait a minute, they need to vote on that.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Okay. And I'm sorry, the first, I was.
Could you read the first one?
It's the Appalachia High Intense Drug Trafficking Area Subaward Agreement. It's, they were, the Sheriff's Department was awarded nineteen thousand dollars for that. This runs on the calendar year.
Okay. I move that we approve the agreement as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. So the next is request for reimbursements. The first one is the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of three thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty cents. The next one is the Governor's Highway Safety Program. Save Communities in the amount of one thousand three hundred forty-five dollars and four cents. Impaired Driving in the amount of two thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Saki, the Saki Grant Purpose Area One in the amount of twenty-six thousand eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. And the Saki Grant Purpose Area Three in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and seven cents.
Okay. I move that we approve the reimbursements as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No more grants. Moving on to correspondence. First, we have a resignation received from Denny Paluga regarding his seat on the Montague County Building Commission. Kind of self-explanatory. Mr. Paluga's been a longtime member of that board and we certainly appreciate his service there on. Next, we have a.
You need to accept his resignation.
Yeah, I reluctantly move to accept the resignation as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next, we have a letter from Attorney General Patrick Morrissey regarding funds to be received by the county from a settlement with Pfizer and Re- Renbaxy. So basically, this was an initiative by the Attorney General during his time in office where he made a claim against these entities for the sale of Lipitor, which is a cholesterol medicine. And the allegation, I guess, was that it was overcharged and as a result of the settlement, the county's going to receive was fifty thousand dollars as a result of that settlement. So, thank you. Now, Governor Morrissey. No more correspondence?
No. Yeah, I do have a piece of correspondence we just received. It goes out to the Policy Board members of the MMPO from our director, Bill Austin. This note to inform you that Governor Morrissey has appointed Todd Rumbah.
Yes.
Professional engineer as the new Secretary of Transportation and Commissioner of Highways. Mr. Rumbah has a long-time DOH, was a long-time, is a long-time DOH employee, who has been serving as Deputy Commissioner of Highways for construction. I have the privilege of working with him in the past and he seems amenable to working with local communities.
Great. Any correspondence?
No.
Moving on, no unfinished business. Move on to new business. To consider for approval, requisition number thirty-five for Series two thousand and twenty-one B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund.
Requisition is for forty-two thousand five hundred. Those funds will be paid to. Adrian Enterprises and Thrasher Group.
Okay. Move that we approve requisition thirty-five for the Series two thousand and twenty-one B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund as requested.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, consideration of requisition number ninety-eight for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Requisition is for one million forty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-one cents.
Okay. And that is the, the monthly deposit into the sales tax district. And of course, that, that number is less than a hundred thousand dollars of statutory lien and the, the tax administration fee. And collections are up over last month. Right now, we're at about negative one point four-two percent over per month where we were over last year. Last month, we were about two point one eight. So that, that number's slowly creeping up. So I would have moved to approve requisition ninety-eight for the UTC Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Moving on, consideration to approve the request by the Montague County abandoned and dilapidated Property Enforcement Agency to move the following properties to the complaint stage in accordance with county ordinance two thousand four dash oh one. First is District Five map seventeen parcel thirty-eight point one sixteen Pond Road. Next, District Three map seventeen A parcel one oh five one Red Bud Lane. And District Three map sixteen B parcel twenty thirty-eight Dewes Avenue. Motion to approve.
I move to approve the movement of the properties as indicated to the complaint stage.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next, we have consideration to approve a letter of support for the Town of Star City's application for the Rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raise Grants.
Self-explanatory. I approve the letter of support as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. No more new business. Moving on to reports from elected officials. Mayor Lewis, welcome.
Good morning. Good news.
What do we got?
Good morning. Patty Lewis, Mayor of Town of Granville. I have a little bit more detailed report from our engineer that I wanted to share with you this morning. And I think I mentioned before, our poles are in further lights. They're in storage at SGI's lay-down yard. All four pole foundations at the Walmart intersection have achieved the required depth. The rebar and anchor bolts were installed. Concrete was poured and an independent concrete inspections being conducted to make sure that it meets all the cold weather requirements for curing. Blue and Gold Development, as a subcontractor, has mobilized and started grading activities for the increased turning radius at the Walmart intersection and for the pedestrian crossing at that site. Work on the pole foundation at Sesame Drive has begun. Two poles have reached the required eleven feet depth. The thirds, the third and fourth were expected to be done yesterday and today, but the weather didn't cooperate so well. So I, I don't know. That'll probably slow us down a little bit. There is one minor conflict with a concrete thrust block on a MUB water main. And I'm not quite sure what that means, but our engineers working with MUB to get that resolved. And Mon Parish terminated service to two of the streetlight poles that will eventually be removed and replaced with poles on, on the traffic signal poles.
Wonderful.
All good news.
That is.
And we're having a blood drive today in Granville from twelve to six, if anybody wants to donate blood.
Is that at your city building?
Uh, the building behind our city hall.
Okay.
In our social hall.
Okay, the social hall.
Yeah.
Good to know.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good report. No one else? So we have reports from County Commissioner, Sean.
Okay. Since last week, yesterday after, or last week after our meeting, I had a call with the West Virginia Office of Broadband. They wanted an update on our local projects as they were preparing to do the final proposal analysis on all the BEAT applications. They needed to negotiate with, I would assume Comcast and Frontier regarding their proposals to make sure that they remove the servable addresses that they were going to, to, that they had proposed. So that was a good call. I reached out to both Comcast and Frontier after the call to get the information that the Office of Broadband was requesting and they immediately sent that information to them. So I appreciate Comcast and Frontier acting on that quick request. When I talked to them on Wednesday, they wanted the information like ASAP. They were trying to finish their proposal review by the end of the week. So I relayed to both, both of our ISP partners that it would behoove them to get that information in as soon as possible because again, those proposals that are being reviewed at the state level impact Mon County. So I didn't want them to be put aside because they didn't provide the information that was required. Thursday, this is the second Thursday of the month, so it was a busy day for, for meetings. You had a MAP executive meeting, Red Team and Development Authority. Friday, we just had staff reports. We had a call with legal counsel yesterday. I do apologize that I missed Ron Justice's retirement party yesterday. I started that way and right about that times when all the snow was coming and Suncrest was just blocked. I mean, you couldn't get anywhere. So I figured I'd, I'd try to, I tried to stop by on my way back from downtown as I was coming down to get vouchers and on my way back, it was just as bad. So, but I did text Ron and let him know. I let Russ know to, you know, extend my apology for not being there. But I will see Ron today. I have a, today's a regular day. We have a work session and I have our month, our MAP monthly meeting and our annual strategic planning session. So we have a meeting from three to five over at the Ward Center. And after that, I need to meet with Ron regarding a couple of matters with the Aquatic Contract Center. Tomorrow, we have our MMPO meeting. It'll be our first meeting of the year and I'm sure we'll have a lot of discussions about our new secretary and pushing to get our agreement signed that we sent down there a couple of months ago regarding the I, the exit one fifty-five project. So hopefully, we can start getting those things moved. Friday, we have staff, staff reports. I have an ARPA reporting tag up with our administrator and I have a Comcast tag up. On Saturday, we have a monthly breakfast with Joe Stappler and Frank Tavano and Ron Lidle. General comments. Patrick, Mark reached out to us over the weekend. Appreciate you guys jumping in and offering to help out Morgan County where they had, I'm sorry, Monroe County, where they had a fire and it affected their assessor's office. I understand we're not ready to move forward with offering any of our, our old computer equipment yet.
I'm not sure where that's at. The last I had heard was that a lot of their computer equipment was damaged. Assessor's office didn't get damaged too much. A lot of smoke.
Okay.
Issues there and some water damage.
Isn't that, isn't that the, wasn't it under renovation because of a previous fire? I thought there was a previous fire there.
Morgan County had a fire years ago.
Maybe that's what I'm getting it confused with. Cause I was down there.
They were rebuilding their courthouse.
When I was down at Green Bar for the, our risk board meeting, I was driving around the area and I was in Union and drove by the courthouse and it's like, oh, they're, they're, they've got a lot of renovations going on. So apparently happened in the construction area where they were doing the reservations. But anyhow, I appreciate the assessor's office proffering the, you know, the, the offer to help our, our fellow counties with possibly sending them equipment that was still useful, but not being used by us currently. It was stuff that's, as a result of refresh, was just kind of in storage. So thank you very much for that. It is exciting to hear about our new DOT secretary. Hoping to really hit the ground running with a lot of projects we have going on with, with him, with the Department of Transportation and moving a lot of those things forward and continuing on the progress that DOT has actually done in the area with a few projects. And the last thing, Cal, your, your comments. I will try to get you that information. Just so you know, that wasn't money that was really specifically dedicated to. We didn't take funds and put it towards that project. We, we got, in funding the Aquatic Contract Center, like we're one of the three partners that funds the, the Board of Education, CBB. We provide a certain level of funding to the, to the Aquatic Contract Center to keep it operational. So rather than just giving them money with nothing in return, we asked to be part of this My Park program. So we, we provided, rather than just providing them funding, we provide, we, we signed up for the My Park program to incentivize other community partners to participate in that program and to keep the Aquatic Contract Center viable. It's still in a very precarious state, given the, you know, it opened right as COVID hit. And we're still climbing out of that and we've done a lot, but we're still in a very precarious position. We had the generosity of W hospitals with the peak agreement that, that helps. But we're still in that, in that period where we're trying to make the, make the Aquatic Contract Center financially feasible and soluble. So, but I can certainly get you that information. I will tell you that I've pushed a number of times to notify, to get Mylan Park to put, send out regular correspondence to our employees because it wasn't being used by our employees. So I know that those, and they do keep some metrics, but I know our numbers are low. But we've been pushing them to keep regular correspondence. And as the rest of that, the whole Mylan Park facility grows out, all those things are part of that My Park process. You know, the new pickleball courts. You know, so there's a lot more, there's a lot more to it now than when we started. But I can certainly jot down the questions you asked and then I'll provide you as much detail as possible to that regard. So. That's all.
Yeah. I was fortunate on Tuesday to represent the county commissioners at the Mon County Realtors' meeting. And what I did was I handed out a lot of the reports of the end of the year review, which they are going to keep because I thought it was a real positive way of how the county commission takes our money and what we spend it on. They were thrilled to see about how we invested the ARPA funds. They thought that was a real benefit to them. And their big question, of course, was the state of real estate property in Mon County. And I believe it's very positive. And I think it was a really good conversation and support. And I had them, if they have any questions, to contact us, but they were very pleased with that. The second thing is Sean mentioned, since Jimmy Riston is no longer the DOT Director, I'd like to say that I'm looking forward to working with Governor Morrissey and his new appointee, Todd Rumbah, along with our new Region Ford Director, Mr. Gaskins. I'm excited for a revitalization of communication and working relationship to accomplish our mutual goals. And I believe, and this is what I told the Realtors, that next year will be called the Year of Road Improvements in Montague County. And as Shawda mentioned, I just listed seven major projects. Chaplain Hill Temporary Lights, the Green Bag Road Improvements, the University Avenue Suncrest Roundabout, the Bridge from Industrial Park, the Harmony Grove Interchange, Exit one fifty-five interchange, and also the Willie Street modifications that we'll be looking at. And I also want to add, Mayor, that as I said earlier to you before the meeting, was that I received a company called, they wanted to know about the lights and they're going to be thrilled to hear that because they were just hoping as long as it was in the next six months to year, they are planning to move out there. And I think that's what a lot of people are waiting for. So I'm also referring them to you so you can give more specific information. But I'm very excited about that, the report, and I think it's a real positive report and I, and I thank you very much.
Okay. Just a few things. I wanted to thank our staff out at Chestnut Ridge Park. Corwin worked, I think, I think JR said somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-six straight hours trying to get that hill ready for sledding. The, the problem with a, with a hill like that, it's not like it's no shoe where you know you're going to have snow, you know you're going to have staff, you know you're going to have tourists coming in to utilize a sledding hill. These guys have to mobilize very quickly when snow is going to come up and get the machines out, get the lift running. And while we had a problem with the hydraulics on the lift, they did everything they could to get the, the slope groomed. they did everything they could to get the, the slope groomed after some, an issue with a mouse chewing a, a wire on our snowcat, so once they tracked that down and got it working, the, the, the hill was, was in use all day, all weekend and very, very much so from what I understand, so I really thank them and, and, uh, their efforts in getting that going and getting, it's hard to staff a hill like that too when you don't know when you're going to have snow, you don't know when you're going to eat, we can't just hire people and have them sit around and wait for it to snow, so they did a good job of mobilizing and, and calling some people back and getting some people to get up there and make sure that every, when it's being used, it's being used safely, so thank you for the, the staff out there for that, um, would like to thank, uh, now Governor Morrissey for the, 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 the letter we read in with the, with the funds from the, um, settlement that, I don't remember having as much, um, news or as much direct contact with the Attorney General's Office in the past as we've had in the last few years as far as settlements from the opioid settlement and from this one, uh, and, and it, he, the, the governor leaves a great legacy behind and I look forward to, uh, JB McCuskey.
Say, I bet you we have more going forward.
Yeah, taking that role, that's what I'm getting to, I think we've got a very good relationship with, uh, with Attorney General McCuskey now and, and I look forward to his, uh, picking up that mantle and taking, knowing JB, he'll take it, uh, he won't just take it to the goal line, he'll take it farther and probably find a few more fields to plow after that, so, um, thank you for that and I too had to miss Ron Justice's retirement, uh, celebration, I had to go to Parkersburg for a bowling patch for my daughter's, uh, UHS bowling team and needless to say, the roads returning on fifty were a bit treacherous, so, um, congratulations to Ron and I'm sure we're going to work with him on a lot of things going forward as well, uh, that being said, we have anything further?
Do have one, one correction, um, I mentioned that we had a work session today, our work session was canceled, uh, because of, uh, JR was going to come in and do his report and
Right.
talk about, uh, some, a project at Mason Dixon, but, uh, we opted to let him focus on, um, the, what's going on at Chestnut Ridge to continue working on the snow hill.
Great. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We be gone this time.